I'd like to call to order the City of Littleton City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, September 21, 2021. It is 6:30 or 18:30. Thank you, Carol. All right, City Clerk.
Mayor Valdez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Malin, Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Fay.
Here.
Councilmember Grove, Councilmember Milliman, Councilmember Rednicki.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Please join me in the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, and God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, thank you. All right, Council, you've all had the chance to see the agenda. Any changes? Seeing none, it is approved. We'll move right down into our reports. We'll start with our City Manager.
All right, Mayor, good evening, Council. Thank you. Just a couple of comments here. First, on the tentative calendar here, I went ahead and made a change here this afternoon. And if you look at October 5th, we had, under second reading and public hearing, the Aspen-Grove Development as well as the noise ordinance. This noise ordinance was for downtown. We are anticipating pretty good size turnout here for Aspen-Grove, so I went ahead and moved it to the special meeting of October 12th, which also happens to be our short-term rental discussion. So, we don't have a lot of flexibility left in our calendar here, but I thought it would probably kind of manage the time better if we were to make that change. So, we'll be in the process of updating the public notice on all of that, so that people are aware of this change here for the noise ordinance. The other thing I wanted to comment on is the shooting that took place here and early this morning. So, the Council is well aware that we had two officers respond to a call, one of which received multiple gunshot wounds and was in intensive care, and has weathered that pretty well under the circumstances. The other officer did not receive any gunshot wounds, but certainly was wounded as part of the issue here. And I think my comment here to the Council, to the community, is that I think it's episodes like this that, you know, remind us that first, you know, the security that we have in our community, we are very proud of the fact that our crime rate is probably one of the lowest in the state and certainly, certainly the country. We know that. But it's also times like this that remind us that sometimes that can be pretty fragile, and we should not take that for granted. It's a tough time for the Police Department here at Littleton. They had a pretty tough day. Professional worked through this. We will get to a resolution of this, no doubt. It's also a difficult time here for this organization, because we are small. It's not just the Littleton Police Department. And, you know, I take all this, you can tell, pretty serious. Maybe a little difficult for me to talk through, but we do have a pretty amazing organization, and I just want to acknowledge the work of our Police Department. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mark. City Attorney, please.
No report, thank you.
Thank you. Let's start with Councilmember Millen.
I've been sending all of my positive energies to our Littleton Police Department and our wounded police officer. I found, I heard the news today when I was in Louisiana, and it's been on my mind all day. I have a couple of things to update you all on. I did attend a Fine Arts Board meeting last week. Couple of things that are coming up and also completing here. On November 11th, there's a combined opening reception for Own and Original and the Secret Life of Clothes Exhibits at the museum. And thank you to the Friends of the Library Museum. They are going to be hosting that reception, so very appreciative of that. And an update on the Community Art Project called One Book, which is at Bemis Library as well. Thirty-one people attended a two-day workshop. It was very heavily attended, and it was a very positive exhibit or a very positive gathering of community. There's currently 23 works, community, or residential exhibits of art at the Bemis Library and the Art Gallery, which is in the basement, through September 30th. There is a closing reception on September 30th from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Bemis Library Gallery. So, that's the Fine Arts Board. They have a lot of other things going on, but those are just two of the highlights. Next thing is the South Metro Housing Options. Our Housing Authority met this month. Very exciting news with the Foster Youth Program. Out of 21, 24 possible vouchers, this is a program that's run through, the federal program run through HUD to provide monies to filter down to local communities to help keep foster youth from becoming homeless, to try to help them to find housing and receive support services in the community. Out of the 24 possible vouchers that the City of Littleton received, up to 12 have found housing, and possibly five more are looking. And these are folks who are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless, so it's a very positive program. We have a new Resident Services Director named Joanna Crosby and a new Director of Housing, Helen Hoy. So, we're very happy to welcome them to the Housing Authority. Also, as with all organizations, not just City of Littleton, but across the board, there are staffing challenges, but Corey Ritz is really working very hard to fill those positions, so kudos to him. And the last thing is the Housing Task Force met this month, too, as well. And basically, most of the conversation was a lot of talk about their disappointment of how the ULUC is playing out right now. They're very upset about ADU's, major concerns with parking and open space requirements in the corridors. Just kind of disappointed that things aren't moving in the direction they had hoped. These concerns have been raised in staff, especially Jennifer Henninger, who's been working really hard with South Metro, with the Housing Task Force, and we feel like things are going to be turning as well in a good direction. Also, Kathleen, Osher and Corey Ritz will be attending, I think it's the third session of the Inclusionary Zoning Cohort through Dr. Cog this coming Wednesday, so they're going to learn a lot, too, as well. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Fay.
All of you who are interested in the Littleton Immigration Resource Center, I urge you to stay for the part of the meeting under General Business where Council will be approving, hopefully, the Tri-Cities Homelessness Action Plan. I see a tremendous connection between those two things. The Tri-Cities Homelessness Policy Group is a group that I've served on for the past three years, and we took a situation of homelessness that existed for three separate cities and worked on it regionally, so that it wasn't just one city, and we made it into something much bigger. And I think that that can and should also be done with an immigration center, not done in combination with the homelessness, but to use the Homelessness Policy Group's pattern and success as perhaps a template, to take the fabulous legacy that's been established with the Littleton Immigration Resources Center and make it bigger and stronger and of use to far many more people, and even perhaps located in a more central location, preserving, of course, the fabulous legacy that we have going. The Littleton program is really small in the whole scope of things. Roughly 90, no, not even 90 people served, which is fabulous that that many people are being served and many in the past. But I would say it's quite possibly not enough. The amount of money that the city has been able to put into it, I would say is not enough, even though it's probably clearly too much for the city with the city's budget constraints right now. The program deserves so much more than Littleton alone can give it. What the Homelessness Policy Group did was bring together a number of partners, oh, numerous ones, federal programs, the Veterans Administration, not that that applies to immigrants, but county programs, nonprofit programs, and grants, all of that into helping to support this need. It's not done yet, it's just begun. But a really important thing to note is that Littleton has not been asked and will not be asked to contribute any Littleton money to that effort. That's significant. I just want that to drift down. Tremendous success with a regional program is lined up to help people who really need it without Littleton taxpayer money. So, we can do that, again. In fact, whether or not I'm reelected, I have first on my list, other than petting the cat more than I have been, to get out there and look for partners. And I have a pretty good idea from my experience on the Homelessness Policy Group of places to, I'm getting choked up about this, this is important, to start to look to bring people together. And I envision, of course, not just Littleton, but especially the cities near us, who I would guess haven't done much, because Littleton has been doing it. And you know, sometimes, like in a family, when you have somebody who takes care of everything and does everything and does it really strong and gets it all done, the others just let them do it, because they're doing it well. I'd see Littleton pulling out of funding this center as a really positive step forward, to give room for the other jurisdictions to step in and give space for this immigration assistance for people who are here legally and working and want to be citizens and all of that, to be able to help more of them with more money. I had the opportunity, about 10 years ago, to be traveling in China by myself. It's hard to explain without sounding like an idiot, that that happened by accident, but it did. And I am forever so grateful to the many, 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 many people who helped me day after day in a strange land where I didn't know anything. And so, with that three-week experience alone, I bring a commitment to help with an immigrant resource center regionally. And the fact that it's not in Littleton doesn't mean the end at all. One more thing is I, too, want to say condolences to the officer who was shot, oof, many times, and his family, and wish him a speedy recovery. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Driscoll.
Well said, Carol, both the officer and the immigration. I thought they're here for the free ice cream.
Oh, is there ice cream?
I thought there was free ice cream. I want to thank Frank Atwood for putting on a dedication or remembrance for Jerry Hill tonight that we just had over at Geneva Village. Great job, Frank, and all those people that attended. A tree dedication in Jerry's memory, so really well done. On Friday, I attended the Masons. They had their 100th cornerstone celebration on Saturday. As you know, the Masons are right down, right at Alamo in Maine. You see it every time you turn off of Santa Fe. And so, I want to thank Mark and all the other brothers for making me feel so welcome, really a neat organization, and just got done celebrating their 100th anniversary. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Rednicki.
I want to dito the comments of others about the officer and add something small here. Littleton is a small community with a, we're proud of our small-town heritage with its delights, its amenities, but also its responsibilities. And sometimes we have a responsibility to care more about the citizens and the workers in our community, because we are small and we're not an impersonal bigger city. So, my heartfelt wish that the officer recovers quickly. I went to a joint meeting with the Arts and Culture Commission and the Fine Arts Board on September 9th. They gave a presentation by John Grant on public art and benefits, public art benefits, and how to set up a program for community art. In my four or five months now on Council, it's, the Commission and the Fine Arts Board has opened my eyes as to the value of the arts in our community. Let me just rattle off a few pithy things that I picked up from this, the lecture from John Grant. A lot of times, citizens, they, and communities, they build their buildings, and then art is an end product. What they're trying to do is introduce the thought that art and buildings go together from the beginning. They talk a lot about the impact of art on the community and leaving a mark on your community with public art. They talk about the creating a community where people and businesses want to be. I mean, when people come, when people talk about Littleton, people come to Littleton, they're not going to be talking about, say, a neighborhood with a house 15 feet, another house, another 15 feet a house. They're going to talk about our amenities, the river, our downtown, and all our great amenities near downtown, Rapid Community College, Buck Center, all those things. Art is an integral part of, I call it the cherry on top. We take care of all our functional items, but the art is the cherry that makes the community livable and where we all want to live. And a community creates, a community and art, with art, creates places where people gather, they can talk, they can admire, they can visit. It's a unique, we can rest, we can work, we can play, we can take pride in our community, and we're introducing experiences with our art. That's what I've gotten in my five months as the liaison with the Arts and Culture Commission. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. All right. I'm going to start out with, I think we all get phone calls from citizens about people blowing through stop signs or speeding around schools and things like that. And the way I'm talking, when they call me up, the way I'm addressing some of these issues, it is that, well, who was doing the speeding? Or the blowing the stop sign in your neighborhood, or maybe speeding by the school? It's likely it's your neighbor that's going through those stop signs in your neighborhood. In the schools, it's often other parents. So, I would encourage schools maybe to put out a letter to the residents that remind, to their parents, other students, to be aware of what they're doing. And it is, it's a dangerous thing. We've been fortunate this year. I don't think anybody's been hurt that I'm aware of. Same with the four-way stops. I know I got a call from someone in your neighborhood in Oakbrook just recently complaining about a stop sign. It's, and it's likely people in their neighborhood, and it's happening everywhere, and it's getting worse, probably. First thing they do is want police. They want police standing at the corner, monitoring every stop sign that we have in the city, and that's just not practical. Council spent, was it two Saturdays ago now, we worked on the budget, and it was a long day for us, but we got it done. Good job, Council. And that's where leaders have to step up and make tough decisions in a budget. We have to make cuts. It's the reality of it, just as we all have to make cuts. There's a program that I know that many of you here are here to support tonight. 2018, the program was actually not going to be defunded after 2019, I believe it was, maybe 2020. We did find a way to fund it. The Council, back then, it was seven to zero to no longer fund the Immigration Resource Center. This Council, five to two, has also made the decision to not defund it past the current customers that they have or students that they have. I understand it's a great program, but as are fiduciary's responsibility as Councilmembers, all of us, is to study that budget, of which I believe we all have. If there was a way to fund that program, we would. The way that program should be funded, as we asked the folks way back in 2018, is go out and get donations. It appears that the donations didn't come in in order to support the program, and that's sad, because it is a wonderful program. I think at some point, City Manager, you're going to share with us a list of other resources that are available, not tonight, I don't believe, but at some, in the near future, you're going to be sharing with us some other resources. So, Littleton's is not the only resource center around here. Again, I'd like to express my appreciation to the men and women in the Littleton Police Department. They literally risk their lives. Every day, they come to work, and every night, as well. One of the things that people love about Littleton is that it's a safe community. That would not be possible if we did not have law enforcement in the courts that enforce our laws. Our police officers literally risk so much to defend and serve our community. I want to give my appreciation to Chief Stevens, if you could please pass that on, City Manager, for the leadership that he has provided. I saw his press release, video press release that he did. Incredible, heartfelt. That's why those men and women that wear that badge really like this chief. He's a true leader. We really like, and I really appreciate every one of those folks that are out there. I have received many calls today from other cities around the state, I've been on the phone almost all day today, expressing their support to our officers. My thoughts and prayers go out to the police officer and his family and a speedy recovery, and it will be a long recovery, but he will recover. And also, Council, on behalf of all Councilmembers, today I did deliver food to the investigation site. There were sheriff deputies down there, Littleton Police, Sheridan was there, like, Rappel County, as I mentioned, Inglewood. There were agencies all over wanting to help. So, on behalf of Council, I did take some food down to those folks, as well as the station, because we have folks that were working literally all night, and they didn't go home. You know, they stayed to, they want to find out what the heck's going on. So, again, our police officers are incredible in today's environment, where it's almost acceptable of some to be critical and physically and verbally attack our police officers. Unacceptable to me, unacceptable. So, again, a speedy recovery to our police officer. With that, we will, we have no citizens' appearance tonight, so we'll move down to our public comment. It is 6:53. The way we're going to handle this tonight, we will go through our lists that we have. We're going to go for about 30 minutes, and then we're going to move on to the consent agenda. And so, we'll get through as many as we can tonight that are on the list, and if we have some that we don't get to, we will take care of that business after our general business on our agenda tonight. Okay? So, Councilmember?
Public comment is an opportunity to express opinions or ask questions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The City Council is not authorized under the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not a part of tonight's agenda. The Mayor may refer the matter to the City Manager and City Attorney for immediate comment after public comment, to obtain additional information and report back to the Council as appropriate. We expect comments to be civil, disrespectful, or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Please remember to state your name and address or council district for the record. Please speak directly into the microphone.
Great, thank you very much. First up, we have Eric Knight, then Jackie Sumler, and then after Jackie will be Julie Guzman. All right, Eric. And remember to speak directly into that mic, give us your name, your address. Appreciate it. Thank you.
My name is Eric Knight. My address is 695 West Davies Court in Littleton. I have been a Littleton citizen for about 35 years now, and I'd like to start out by thanking the Council for the opportunity to address you tonight. I appreciate the chance to do so. I'm here to discuss the Littleton City Council's recent preliminary decision to defund the Littleton Immigrant Resources Center. As most Littleton citizens are by now, I'm well aware that the City of Littleton has a serious budgetary shortfall and that some painful choices have to be made. Having said that, I'd like to discuss a little bit the decision to defund the LIRC. One of the most popular programs that the LIRC offers is English as a Second Language classes. It's one of the most requested and most utilized services they provide. The people who are requesting the service are, by and large, recent immigrants to the country who, their reason for requesting ESL classes is so they can become integrated into our community as quickly as possible. And doing that provides a real financial benefit to our community, in addition to it being the right thing to do, them becoming integrated quickly and becoming full-fledged members of our society and community, that provides real, not just feel-good about yourself, but real financial value to our community. And the ESL program, there's a very small paid staff, but the vast majority of the heavy lifting is done by unpaid volunteers. And incidentally, it's a highly skilled occupation. It requires a great deal of training and experience to teach English as a second language effectively. And so, the idea of saying And so the idea of saying no to accepting a large amount of skilled volunteer labor from this, from these volunteers, just does not make financial sense. So I would like to ask the council to reconsider that decision and do the right thing and continue to fund the LIRC. It's the right thing to do for our community, and financially, it just makes a whole lot of sense. So thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight, and I hope you'll do the right thing and reconsider your decision on funding LIRC. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jackie, and then Julie Guzman, and then Kim Graham.
Hi, my name's Jackie Summerlin. I'm from Highlands Ranch, 10655 High Smith Court, and I'm one of the volunteers at the Littleton Immigrant Resource Center. And I, I'm here at the last minute to just speak my heart. I can relate to the councilwoman who spoke about being in China. I also was in China and traveling through on purpose, but not fluent in Mandarin or even decent at it. And boy, if I didn't have the people at the moment helping me, who knows what would have happened? So I totally relate. It makes me think about our friends, our new friends, who are in our community and working in our community and living in our community and near our community, who also need our help now. I love your idea about pulling together resources, but it just breaks my heart to think about the people who will be told no, that they have to wait until we pull something together. And I didn't know the history of what you expressed about 2018 and, you know, speaking about things, but I'm wondering, can we just step back for a minute and reconsider this and look at, can we, can we start working on that? But before we stop this program, can we fund it for another year, at least another year, as we're working on putting something together? The people need the help now, and I know there are other places. I love that it's in Littleton, because I know, I know there's some help in Aurora, or there used to be, but it's hard. The woman that I'm helping, she works full-time, she has two young children, she doesn't have the time to drive a lot to get the help. And so when there, when there are resources like we have right now in Littleton, it makes all the difference in the world to the people that live in and near this community. And I think about, I don't live in Littleton proper, I guess, I'm not sure. Highlands Ranch often has Littleton come up when you put in the address, but I know when I found out about this, it just made me all that much more proud of Littleton. I know about Dr.'s Care in Littleton, I was able to volunteer there for a while, a wonderful resource. And I've learned how immigrants have been welcomed into this community, and this is such a vital resource for them. So I just ask you to please reconsider, can we keep doing something now instead of taking it all away while we put together a more, a bigger plan that can help more people? Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Next up, we have Julie Guzman, Kim Graham, and then Rosala Hughes, or Hunes. I apologize for butchering these names.
Good evening, I'm Julia Guzman, and I'm an immigration attorney. I live at 162 West Fremont Avenue here in Littleton, and my office, my law practice office is at 6634 South Broadway, less than three miles from here. I'm the daughter of immigrants. I'm on the Executive Committee of the American Immigration Lawyers Association of Colorado, which is one of the organizations that has proudly donated to the award-winning Littleton Immigrant Resource Center. So there are plenty of people donating as well. I received my JD from Georgetown University Law Center and have been a licensed attorney for over 20 years, and I've owned my own practice for five years. I've had the privilege of being one of the 100-plus volunteers whose hearts have been filled by assisting the amazing and important work of the LIRC. Immigration law is the most complicated body of law that there is. Five different government agencies have a role in immigration. Most foreign nationals don't have a path to citizenship, and those who do often have to wait 20 years or more to get a green card, and then another five years or more to become citizens. At that point, to have language difficulties or small errors on your application keep you from becoming a citizen is a travesty. Many of my clients have come to me after attempting to navigate the immigration system on their own. Often, they're not only denied and have to begin again and pay fees again and all that, but also they've destroyed their chances of becoming citizens because they were unaware of what they needed to do or what they needed to avoid doing. Littleton Immigrant Resource Center is small but mighty. It is, it was larger, in July of 2020, they had to lay off three of the staff, and that's why they've reduced significantly their work. But in 2019, the LIRC provided 209 group ESL classes, 122 group citizenship classes, they tutored 110 language partners, 84 citizenship partners, they added 100 volunteers, they opened 176 naturalization cases and filed over 200 USCIS applications with virtually no rejections, and 25% of their expenses were offset by revenue. So that's not 90, and not less than 90, it's about the size of an element, of a small elementary school, and I think that's a really important number and an important work that's being done there. The LIRC does invaluable work helping law-abiding, tax-paying people achieve their lifelong dream of becoming a citizen for an affordable fee. They are paying. Few non-attorneys are permitted to provide legal advice to other people, but the LIRC has Department of Justice accreditation, which is required to provide much-needed advice and assistance to the clients. They are the only one, I believe, or at least one of few, with this accreditation in the South Metro Denver area, and they take immigrants from the application process through their interview, assisting them with the language learning, civics test preparation, as well as green card renewal if needed. Seeing a teary-eyed immigrant take the citizenship oath while holding the American flag will fill your heart with joy and love. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk with me.
Thank you very much. All right, next up is Kim, then Rosalie, then Eric, I believe that's Butler.
Hi, my name is Rosalie Hunes. I'm from Morrison, Colorado, 15586 Red Deer Drive.
Did we have Kim Graham up?
Pardon?
Okay.
So you're next? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I was going to say, I know I'm butchering the names, but I didn't do that bad. I mean, Kim Graham, come on.
Hi, all, I'm Kim Graham. I have been involved with the Littleton Immigrant Resources Center off and on for 10 years. I'm a 13-year Littleton resident. I've worked for the Immigrant Resources Center for about five years, and then I liked it so much, I continued volunteering afterwards. So I just wanted to take a little bit of a different take on why the Littleton Immigrant Resources Center is so important. It's not just helping immigrants, it's also creating those cultural connections, where you're taking people from, who wouldn't necessarily meet and putting them together. So the way that we've done that is we've had mentoring programs and also language partners, and it really makes it, the city of Littleton, a more vibrant place. If you've ever gone down to the library, you see people working together, and they're people from different walks of life. So I think that taking this program away is not just hurting the immigrants and the resources, it's hurting everyone in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And back. Rosalie, thank you. After that will be Eric, and then Betsy Winchester.
Okay, Rosalie Hunes, 15586 Red Deer Drive, Morrison. I'm a former resident of Littleton, even though I live in Morrison, and it was one of my favorite places to live. I lived on Windermere, a block from the library. I treasure that library. I think it brings so much to the community, more so now than ever before when I lived here. I have now volunteered for six years at the library with the LIRC, teaching English and citizenship classes, as well as tutoring individuals. Right now, the students are quite devastated that the classes will not continue. They don't know where to go. They're used to coming, they're, they live in this area, it's too far for them to travel somewhere to Aurora or Denver or wherever else they could go. And many of them don't have the ability, they don't drive, they don't, they don't, they don't speak well enough to be able to negotiate getting a bus. And so it's a real problem. It really upsets their way of life. I've seen how the students can grow in confidence when they can speak English. It's wonderful to see, it brings a joy to our hearts. They are able to get better jobs when they speak English, take care of their families, and be productive members of society. If we don't help them, then they will stay doing menial, low-income jobs, unable to truly integrate into American society, and then unable to support their families, thereby needing more in the way of social services. Many immigrants have had to flee their homes, and they didn't have the luxury of a secondary education, let alone speaking English. Many of them are working menial jobs, and they don't have the money to go to Emily Griffiths. So they need programs like LIRC. I really hope you will reconsider at least extending this program for another year, so that we can organize some other program for them, and I appreciate what you have come up with. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, we have Eric, and then Betsy Winchester, and then Susan Thornton.
Hello, my name is Eric Boitler, District 2, over by Bemis Library. I want to say two things before anyone throws anything at me. One, I am more than happy to donate to the immigrant center, and two, I am thankful that the city's no longer funding it. I also had a list of things. I am offended, and I think a lot of refugees would be offended, to be lumped into the homeless group, 66% of which have addiction issues. Next, I have seven priority choices for our city councils, they decide, debate, and vote for the priorities of our, of our city. One, more single-family homes or more apartments. Two, maintain the apartment-to-home ratio in the city of Littleton, or increase our housing density. Three, celebrate the uniqueness and diversity of Littleton, or make it more like the Denver Metro area and their failed policies. Four, safe cities and parks for our kids, or safe city and parks for homeless people. We have a good town and community to visit, with beautiful art, gathering, places, and beautiful things, and that's how those buildings should continue to be. Apartment complexes don't fall under that category. So do we want a good town to visit, or a metro suburb that needs to grow? Six, city council's role, is it to serve constituents or to add new residents? Seven, choosing to have kids playing in yards, or kids playing in the parking lots of apartment complexes? People came running to live in Colorado because of the incredible place it was already, it already was. No one moved here after carefully considering the political and legislative policies of our city councils. I'm sorry. Regarding chicken or the egg, our political policies changed because of everyone who moved here, not so they would move here. Littleton will thrive because it's better than Denver, not because it's like Denver. I encourage you guys to embrace, protect, and fight for the thriving, unique community that this is, and the diversity that we are from the city. We do not have to mix into the khaki blend that Denver has become. We can stand out. I strongly encourage you guys to think about this with your policies. Being in the tri-city homeless policy is not a good idea. Denver's failing. It's failing miserably.
Thank you. Next up, we have Betsy, then Susan Thornton, then Lynn Popkowski, sorry?
That's Popkowski.
You had to ski, though, not connect it to the papow, and it was to the right of it, so you threw me off.
I'm Betsy Winchester, 6577 South Gallup Street. I'm the former Citizenship Program Coordinator at Littleton Immigrant Resources Center and a current volunteer. I think it's very short-sighted of you to defund this program. I think that the amount of their budget is relatively small, in the scope of the city's whole budget, and as some of the others have said, we have so many volunteers that the value is much more, you know, many, many unpaid hours. This creates community, it's a benefit for the volunteers as well as the students, creates connections that otherwise might not be there. Our tutors and volunteers often become friends, connect their families, and those immigrants, often it's their, their bridge to American society and really helps them to integrate. As far as what Mayor Valdez does said about us not raising money in 2018, and also what Councilwoman Fay said about the regional, combining with other metro cities, you know, that I, I support that idea, and I see what you're saying about the fundraising, but they don't have the staff to do that. Very bare-bones organization, especially since the citizenship positions were cut. They just have two employees, one at 40 hours and one at 30 hours, I believe. So they don't really have the extra time to fundraise, and the way that it's set up with them being under the city, I was always confused if you were suggesting that they take time away from their teaching and legal services duties to do a lot of fundraising, if that would even be appropriate in the scope of their job. So, I know, as Councilwoman Fay suggested, it would be fantastic to have more collaboration with nearby cities and have, but we really need more classes. Some students do travel to Littleton, as other people said, we don't, it's too far to go to Aurora, but there just are not a lot of English classes, and really very few citizenship classes, especially now that Littleton no longer has that. But I hope that you will reconsider, this is a program that we should be proud of. It increases the diversity of our community, and I hope that you will reconsider your decision.
Thank you. Next up, we have Susan Thornton, then Lynn Popowski, followed by Pam Chadbourne.
Good evening, council, it's good to see you all here again. I wanted to start-
Right into that mic, if you will, so we can all hear you. Thank you.
I wanted to start by saying how sorry I am to learn about the shooting of our police officers and their being so damaged, and I hope everyone is sending prayers to them and their families, and to the other officers in our force. I also want to thank you, on a separate topic, for putting together the, putting forward the sales tax increase, putting it on the ballot. It's something I strongly support as an investment in Littleton's future. But as you know, I've been very concerned about the future of LIRC at Bemis Library, and I've heard that some council members are unhappy that LIRC serves more people from outside Littleton than inside Littleton, and that, of course, you heard tonight about a plan, yeah, to have a regional center established that would be like LIRC, and have other governments and nonprofits pay for it. I've got, as you know, rather extensive experience in establishing regional organizations, and I can tell you, it takes a long time, and it's not easy, especially if money isn't being asked. So just keep that in mind. And speaking of regionalism, where will this end? I mean, I feel like it's a slippery slope. Town Hall Art Center is a regional venue, people come from all over to its, its performances and stuff. Should the city stop paying for the historic building it's in? Our wonderful museum is a regional draw. I'm sure more people come from outside the community than inside every year. Should we sell off the animals, lay off the staff, shut it down until we find somebody else who wants to pay for it? I don't think so. LIRC provides essential services for legal, underlying legal, immigrants, and they've come there, as you've heard, to learn English and to become citizens, and those folks are not going away. It's in our own self-interest to have them become citizens and taxpayers. And we've got 2,000 Afghan families coming to the metro area. They're going to need help adjusting here. This is not the time, in my opinion, to shutter the LIRC. It's time when we should expand it and continue the city's long history of humanitarian caring and integration of new people. Littleton Independent Reporter David Gilbert said it well in his farewell to the community. He said, "Littleton is at its best when it lifts up its neighbors." I hope you- I hope you'll reconsider your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Lynn Popowski, Pam Chadborn, then Jen Kim. I apologize for butchering your name.
No, that's fine. You're not the only one.
You wrote popow, and then all of a sudden over here you put ski. You threw me off.
I'm sorry.
I thought it was your middle name was popow.
I'm sorry. So I'm Lynn Popkowski. I live at 6527 South Lothian Street in District 4. Shortly after I retired from a career of teaching in public schools, twenty years of which were in Littleton Public Schools, at Wilder Elementary and Heritage High School, I became aware of a program that was starting up citizenship classes, and I thought, well, that is what I can do to give back. So the LIRC has empowered 1,020 immigrants to become U.S. citizens. It enabled 3,467 students to learn English and citizenship, and people from more than forty countries got to know the generosity and the caring of Littleton and Bemis Library. Moreover, 1,072 volunteers donated thousands of hours to make this happen. I was one of them, and I know firsthand the deep appreciation and the gratefulness of those students. Each would express their gratitude to me after every class or session that I had with them, and I witnessed their and their children and families' tearful pride upon becoming citizens and living or working in a community that supported them to achieve that goal. And this program, you know, drew many, many others from surrounding areas. Working full-time, raising their family, they chose this program and drove here on weeknights, weekends, thus magnifying Littleton's name and its reputation. Several U.S. congressmen visited the center and praised it on the floor of Congress in D.C. So with the program already cut to its bare bones, I was disheartened to hear that there was a vote to defund what services were left, and I want to thank Kelly Milliman and Scott Mellon for voting to keep the funding. If you believe that Littleton values diversity and inclusion, this vote seems to belie that belief. If you believe that the immigrant community strengthens and enhances our city, well, that vote seems to belie that belief. A famous quote from Gandhi springs to mind here. "The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable members." So instead of an island, let's have Littleton be the city on the hill and keep funding the LIRC. It's not too late. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Pam Chadborn, and then with the other people that are on our list, we're going to keep until after item number eight on our agenda. So Pam, you will be our last one at this time. Thank you.
Sorry about that, everybody. My name is Pam Chadborn. I live a block and a half from here. My thoughts go out to the police department. I'm the officer. I didn't realize. And the police have always been helpful to me, and I'm sorry to hear. First, I want to say that I'm grateful that the city council took a very reasonable step on short-term rentals. Every short-term rental is a hole in our neighborhoods. When you live in a neighborhood, you rely on people near you, and you know who they are, and you'll help them, and they'll help you. And every STR is a person who doesn't know who their neighbors are. They're there to have a good time. They're there to do certain things that aren't like those of us in our day-to-day lives. This short-term rental proposal, thank you so much. It's a more moderate step, and I think it's the right way to ease into this. If Councilmember Grove was here, she said that, "Take a step at a time. Leave something for future councils. Take a step and see what happens." This is more moderate. Thank you for doing that. Also, I agree that the Immigrant Center should be funded. And just figure, it takes much more time to create, to build something, and this has magic. There's something about this group of people that doesn't exist in most places. This doesn't happen casually. It shouldn't be discarded for, to me, trivial reasons like a, this is a small amount of our budget. We've nourished this child as it grew. It has grown into something magnificent, and we should not destroy it. The very fact that it exists in this way is proof. It can't happen everywhere. It happened here. Keep it alive, keep it strong, in serving everyone. Climate change is only going to create more refugees. We have a responsibility to care for people who our pollution has caused to lose their livelihoods where they live, or our warlike policies have caused to move. One speaker said it makes Littleton a more vibrant place. The noise downtown does not make Littleton more vibrant. Teaching people and integrating people in our community does. It's good to have regional and small programs. You should have both. We should have both. We shouldn't have one or the other. This is a huge return on investment. It shouldn't be cut. Finally, I just want to mention, in memory of Jerry Hill, thank you for the tree program, and I'm glad that we could donate a tree and dedicate it to Jerry. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And looking at the clock, we're going to go two more. So we still have, if we can go ahead and go for Jen Kim, then we'll have Pat Cronenberg, and then we will have to balance the lists later, as well as those that are not on the list. Is she here? Kim?
Oh, I didn't know that's where the speaker is.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much. That means Pat Cronenberg is up.
Good evening, council. I'm Pat Cronenberger, District 2. I wanted to be sure that you saw that longtime community member Ellie Greenberg passed away earlier this month at the age of eighty-eight. Ellie was a very accomplished woman with a PhD in lifelong education, a number of honorary degrees, and an inductee of the Colorado Women's Hall of Fame. She was a lifelong civil rights activist, and you can read all about it here in the obituary in the Denver Post. There's nothing like a hard copy of a newspaper to date a person, but I did want to make note tonight of her important role in the 1960s here in Littleton to bring fair housing practices to our community and to establish the second public housing authority in the state of Colorado. SMHO, as you know, is the second oldest. Ellie was a member of the Littleton Human Rights Commission. She and others worked hard to eliminate the detrimental practices of redlining in our community. It was a pivotal moment, and I strongly believe that that moment shaped our culture to strive hard to be a community that enacts values of inclusivity and diversity. Certainly, those values were loudly voiced when the city commissioned the BBC Housing Study in 2017. Ellie and other citizens like Libby Borts and Reg and Sally Bizet invited Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. to come to Littleton to speak about fair housing, and he came. And I always had this image of these folks sitting around in somebody's house and saying, "Let's invite Dr. King," and they did it, and he came. That's Littleton way, don't you think? By the way, the photo that's at the Littleton Museum depicts Dr. King, and he's standing there with then-Mayor Tom Heaton. When I was starting out in civic life, all of these folks, Ellie, Libby, Reg, Sally, spoke with great pride of their role in inviting Dr. King to the community to work toward fair housing practices. Reg was a former Littleton mayor and council member. He and Sally were owners of a real estate brokerage firm off of Littleton Boulevard, and they were die-hard Rappahoe County Republican activists. So people of all walks of life were involved in this amazing effort. So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize Ellie's passing, and it's an important part of Littleton's history. Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
All right. With that, it is 7:27. I'm going to suspend public comments until later. We're going to move into our consent agenda items. We have ordinance 25-2021, an ordinance on first reading, repealing, and reenacting Chapter 23 entitled Short Term Rentals to Title III Business Regulations. ID number 21-208, motion to approve minutes of the September 7, 2021 regular meeting. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion.
Chair, I make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A and B.
We have a motion in a second. Counsel, are you ready to vote? Did it pop up yet? There we go. Is it up? Got it? You don't have it yet? Open, there we go. Thank you. All right, let's see. It looks like everybody's voted. Cool, thank you.
The vote is five in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you, counsel. We move down to General Business Resolution 40-2021, approving the Tri-City Homeless Action Plan. With that, I will turn it over to the City Manager.
All right, thank you, Mayor, counsel. We have Samma Fox, the Assistant to the City Manager. She's here this evening to share the Homeless Action Plan. I'll make a few comments after her presentation here, just on the journey we've been for the past three years. Samma?
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, counsel. As you said, I'm Samma Fox, Assistant to the City Manager. Tonight, I want to remind everyone that the Tri-Cities Homeless Action Plan is actually part of our council work plan. It aligns with our Goal Six, Housing and Livability, as an, and is an action step under our Objective Two for Housing Affordability. Let's see if we can get that on the screen there. Apologies here. Thank you for being patient with me. Just waiting for it to change on the screen here.
All right, this is live audience. Samma, you're losing us.
I apologize. I'm changing it on my screen. I don't see it changing on the upper screen.
There we go. There's Ty, but he'll get it figured out.
Technical expert. Mark, I don't know if you'd like to make your comments while we're working on this and some of the journey we've been on.
Maybe I'll make some comments, I guess, while we're waiting for our PowerPoint presentation here. You know, I think, as the council is well aware, we've been on a discussion here with Inglewood and Sheridan for the past three years, and Councilmember Faye certainly has been sitting on our Policy Committee here on this topic. We've learned a lot in the past three years. I think at the very beginning, we were trying to define really what the problem was, what's the magnitude of the issue. So we spent a fair amount of time actually collecting data and information about who is the homeless. So when we say homeless, many times we think about the person we see on the street. But as we discovered in our data collection, it's quite honestly a much deeper issue. People that we do not see, and specifically families, that I think was the most concerning here, certainly on my side, is to see kind of the depth of the families that have been homeless. And I think we all know that, as we kind of work through the issue, and certainly with the other two cities, we see kind of a common problem here along Santa Fe, along the river. And it's become more of an acute issue here in the last couple of years, and certainly COVID, I think, has brought out even more, more to the point. And I think the challenge is trying to figure out strategies that somehow get in front of the issue, not so much at the, in responding at the very end, even though that is important. And so I think our action plan here is an opportunity for us to kind of lay out a strategy, and there is no doubt that over time, every year, we're going to learn something new about this topic, and we will have to adjust our action plan. I think during this journey, we've also had an opportunity to work with Arapahoe County, and certainly they've been on a very similar journey. And I think here at the very end of this, I just want to share a couple of comments on the status of our work with Arapahoe County. And what I see is a very strong opportunity for us to link the tri-cities, to link with Arapahoe County, in trying to manage this issue over time, and certainly financially. So with that, I'll let Samma Fox kind of go through our presentation, and then I'll come back at the end.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you for your patience. So as I was mentioning, this is related to our council Goal Six, Housing and Livability. I won't read this all for you. This is all available on our website. A little bit of background, the Tri-Cities Homelessness Policy Group, made up of Littleton, Inglewood, and Sheridan, was created in 2018. As we all know, we share a river corridor and a light-rail corridor, and we're seeing increasing unhoused populations in our community. The first steps this group took were to research. We partnered with DU to do some studies to understand the issue, did a pestil analysis, and really took time to listen to all the partners in this work in the community. In January of this year, each of the city councils met as a group to review this research already done and directed the Tri-Cities Homeless Policy Group to do an action plan. That action plan draft was presented in July 2021, and to date, Inglewood and Sheridan have approved the plan. Tonight, council considers this. During that review process, we had some feedback items. In fact, one of the things that we heard was the importance of having data and metrics around this to understand whether we are making a difference and where we should apply our resources. So one of the first things we'll have our coordinator do is work on this, and we've actually added a section to the plan outlining that requirement. Another key question was, are we duplicating efforts of existing partners? The short answer is no. We are working very hard to be collaborative and not duplicate efforts. In fact, we had Metro Denver Homeless Initiative as part of the group from early on, who serves as Denver's continuum of care and has many organizations connected to them as members under their umbrella to help ensure we're not doing duplication. Another question that came up is, are we engaging all partners? We are actively working to engage all partners. I believe the school district and the hospitals were mentioned, and we are actively working to engage those. If, as we're going through this, you or the community sees a partner we might not be engaging, I welcome you to send that to myself or our Tri-Cities group, and we'll be happy to connect that. And finally, I do want to address, there was a question about, was there a Bridge House in Littleton before? So there is an organization, All Health Network, who has a Bridge House formerly in downtown Littleton. It is now off of Santa Fe. This is actually an acute treatment center and not related to the Bridge House Ready to Work program in our action plan, so an unrelated program. I do want to highlight the anticipated resource needs in this homeless action plan. As you heard, we do recommend starting with a coordinator position, who will return to council before we ask for anything here. And we will return to council before we ask for anything here. Full implementation of the action plan is $750,000. The Bridge House Initiative would take about $6 million to get up and running, and there could be additional costs to get a navigation center up and running. As I mentioned, we'll start with that coordinator position, who will pursue partnership opportunities. This is a unique moment for grant opportunities as well from state and federal resources. We will be pursuing all of those. Our next step is to start with the county and the tri-cities, to hire a coordinator position who can really manage this work and help us prioritize and identify resources. The coordinator will begin implementation, analyze those partnership opportunities, and continue working with the tri-cities and key partners to keep this plan moving. That is the end of my presentation. City Manager?
Mayor, just a couple of things I just want to add here. I think what impresses me about this journey we've been on is kind of a recognition of all of the nonprofit organizations- all of the nonprofit organizations that somehow touch on this issue. And there's like, the list is just so impressive, and I think it makes us all very proud of the community, not just here in Littleton, but certainly Inglewood and Sheridan as well. I think the challenge that we see now is that, once we have the data and understand kind of this, the magnitude of the problem, is how do we coordinate and link all these opportunities? Because obviously, somebody who's homeless, they come into our community, there's no way presently or easily for them to somehow link and get the services that they need. So the intent of the action plan really is the framework for us to begin that process, that discussion. And the coordinator is the first, most important piece of business here on this action plan, is to have somebody step into that role, and so that when we have somebody who is homeless, there is an opportunity for somebody right then and there to coordinate all of the opportunities depending on what their needs are. And their needs can be varied. Sometimes it's fairly simple, and other times it's much more complex. We all know that. And so the conversations that we've had of late with Arapahoe County, I think, are very promising. I think there is a genuine intent here for them to assist countywide, but also to respect the work that we've done here with the tri-cities in trying to address this issue. It's going to take us probably the balance of the year and maybe into the first quarter of next year before we kind of settle how exactly this will work. But Arapahoe County is pursuing coordinators and a navigation center. So the coordination's one issue, but then the navigation center, as it's identified in the action plan, is really kind of the next layer. The county has seen our action plan, they are looking at opportunities to try to assist in all that, but again, we have a lot of details to work out. So what will be the cost to the city, short term, long term? Unfortunately, we can't answer that today. I think what I do see is the three cities at least sharing in the cost of the coordinator. That has been discussed with the county. It's my suggestion that we use the federal funds, ARPA, probably to fund that here initially, maybe for the next few years. But again, we're not in a position really to settle all that until we work out the details of what will eventually be an intergovernmental agreement between the three cities and Arapahoe County. You won't see that likely until after the first of the year. And again, that kind of matches up fairly well with our other financial discussion here about our general fund, sales tax revenue, our ballot issue, and then certainly the rest of the ARPA conversation. So I think here today, I think it's in my my opinion and my recommendation that the council does consider this and for us to adopt this resolution in support of the action plan, and allows us a framework to pursue with the other two cities as we have our discussions with Arapahoe County. Thank you.
Thank you. So counsel, let's discuss, what do we have? Go ahead, Councilmember Driscoll.
Thanks, Mayor. Samma and Mark, 750,000, where did that number come from? I understand it's being split between three cities. Is there any breakdown whatsoever? Is that per year? Is that for a five-year program? What's that look like?
That's for all three years of the action plan.
Okay.
That was actually pulled together in the action plan. You may remember, there's a matrix at the end of it, so there's estimated costs for each of those action steps. They're broken down.
I'll review that.
By that category.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Milliman?
Two questions.
Is your microphone on?
Samma, do you mind just going a little bit more into depth about the Bridge House? That's my first question.
Certainly, so I'm happy to bring additional information too, if I can't answer you tonight. But Bridge House Ready to Work Program is a live and work program meant to have, train people to have skills so they can get out on their own afterwards. They, I believe, run a catering organization up north. So they're working with the cities on partnership opportunities as well to employ members of the house.
But it's not being housed at the Bridge House on Santa Fe?
No, separate.
Okay.
Separate program.
Okay. And then I think Councilmember Fay had mentioned that the city would not be providing any funds. Is that right, for the navigation center? Is that what you said?
What we've been discussing is that ARPA funds would be used. Now, my perspective is that is not city budget funds. And so when I talk about it not being city funding, I'm talking about other sources, other. Mark, you want to explain that further?
If I may, Mayor. I kind of add to Councilmember Fay's comment. I think the discussion that we're having here is that, again, today with Arapahoe County, we do see the cost of the coordinator being split here between the three cities. Perhaps the navigation center might be something that would be entirely the responsibility of Arapahoe County, maybe not. But again, I think this is perhaps part of the ARPA conversation and trying to fund it for the for the three-year period for the plan. So right now, I do not anticipate us using any general fund dollars for this.
Okay.
I do see us using ARPA, at least in the short run. I think it's also important to acknowledge that, and I said this in the beginning, we all recognize that this is a very difficult issue the entire country is faced with here. And I've had my own experiences in another city in the Seattle area where I've seen this pretty, pretty deep. We all know that this is something that this city, the whole area is going to be working on probably forever here, at least the foreseeable future. So what happens beyond the three-year action plan? It's a good question. How is that going to be financed? Can't answer that. I think that this is an issue that we're just going to have to, you know, join Arapahoe County, understand kind of the actions that we take each year, make an assessment. And I also think there's a conversation about the governance of this issue and how the three cities might want to interact with Arapahoe County. But today, I'm not anticipating spending general fund dollars on this.
Well, I am definitely in support of of the Tri-Cities Homeless Action Plan, and it sounds like we're going to be in it for the long haul. It's not a problem. Like you said, it's going to go away. We are not an island, we can't put walls up around this city. We have to work with our with our regional partners on this, and it's a very long-term challenge. And with with regards, I really appreciate everybody that came tonight to speak about LA RC, and I agree.
We need to stick to the topic.
Okay. I was going to say, if we can continue funding that, though, until this navigation center is up and running, who knows how long that's going to take? Maybe that's something that, you know, a discussion to have in the future, so. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Reddicki?
Well, I came into this into this late in the game. I've only been on council, what, five months now? That's a hindrance, but it's, I think it's also an opportunity here. With a fresh pair of eyes, I can look at this rather large proposal. I did talk to our city manager about a couple of things. My first question was this committee that's always talked about in in the proposal, who represents Littleton in the committee? Carol, and I guess city managers, and obviously staff input, so that was answered. I don't have the page number, but it talks about that there is a proviso on funding implementation. What does that proviso mean? Is that the fact that we don't know what it's going to cost, something that Mark already talked about?
That's exactly addressing what the city manager talked about. We will come back to council before we fund anything for this.
Okay, so this will, a little scary on my part to approve something, and we don't know where the funding is coming from. A little bit rickety. This is just a general policy question. I don't need, you know, charts and graphs and twenty minutes of explanation, but why don't we funnel the money into existing programs rather than creating our own program? Give me a one-minute reason why.
Actually, council member, I think that's exactly our intent, is to try to coordinate the existing resources that we do have in the community and not reinvent anything. So I think what's difficult in this particular circumstance is that they don't necessarily talk to each other, all of the nonprofits on this particular issue. And so that's what we are recommending as this coordinator, is to somehow link them. So that's the only system that we would be creating, is this coordination procedure, not so much, you know, reinventing a Bridge House concept here funded entirely by staff or the cities here. We'd be looking for partners that already exist.
Okay, reasonable answer. I did ask our city manager in our 2022 budget that we just went over two Saturdays ago, is there a line item for our $250,000 contribution? And of course, the answer is no. That money needs to be fine, bound, I should say. Last item, I'll have my summation later on, but one point that you made, Mark, is perhaps using some of the 12 million that we're going to get from the feds to get this going. Of course, the worry is, that money's got to be spent by, what, in three years or something of that nature. What happens afterwards? We set up a program, and then it can't be funded, and we have to go find money elsewhere.
I think that's the challenge. I think this is one of those where maybe the federal funding is the opportunity to put this into gear. Again, I think the big unknown is kind of what is it that Arapahoe County can bring to the table to kind of coordinate and navigate all of these existing resources? So what, while the plan may identify, you know, 750,000 today for us to execute a three-year period, I can't tell you what that will look like after Arapahoe County kind of steps into the arena here. And I think that we're just going to have to take that issue on as time permits. My guess is that each year, we'll have to step back and make an assessment. The first big opportunity, of course, is going to be with Arapahoe County shortly after the first of the year. In fact, we're trying to, here at the next Tri-City Policy Meeting, have representatives and a county commissioner, at least one, come to the next meeting to have this dialogue a little deeper. We've already drafted an intergovernmental agreement on this topic, but again, those issues got to be flushed out a little bit more in detail here as time permits. But to answer your question specifically, we don't know what the future brings at the end of the three-year period. And I think it's really difficult for us to judge that at this moment in time without knowing the outcome of Arapahoe County.
All right, thank you. All right, I guess I'm up. So a couple of things before I get the report itself, the DU report that it does reference in here, I think for those that are not in the business of of working with the homelessness situation, I think it was a very enlightening report. It pointed out a lot of stuff that's been happening out there for decades, all mankind, basically. I think for those of us that have worked in the homeless arena, as I have, you know, for over thirty-some years, including twelve years with Colorado Coalition for the Homeless, it wasn't particularly or tremendously a lot of new information in there. I think what what is happening here in, I don't want to say a good thing, but I think homelessness used to be a more of an unseen situation. So again, many of us who have worked in this arena for decades have been aware of it. But what has happened now is that as Denver, particularly Denver in our case, has become more developed around the river and some other areas, it has moved homelessness, individuals and families, there are definitely families out there, and it's become more visible, and it's also increased as our population as our country has increased, it's increasing everywhere, and it's definitely visible everywhere. I think, I forget which politician has said it, might have been one of my favorite, Ronald Reagan, he had said the definition of eternal life is creating a new government program because they never go away. So I am concerned that, as we know about that right now, once you have a program, it's difficult to to end them. I think what, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the homelessness, the homeless action plan is to gather a one-stop, maybe in the city of Littleton, city of Little, Inglewood, city of Sheridan, where folks would go to to find out about resources, which are going to be managed and funded through somehow, don't know, through Arapahoe County. So it isn't as though the city is going to have other, other than maybe someone to provide information and point them in the right direction. Perhaps even, we may need to give rides to those two somewhere. Is that what we have in mind here?
Yeah, I think, Mayor, I think the navigation center is perhaps kind of the term that we're using in the action plan to address the comments you're making. So yes, we would be having a physical location at some place yet to be determined in the tri-city area that would be a place for people to go to get that specific service. And again, there is multiple nonprofits that provide varying degrees of service, and so the coordinator is trying to link them. The navigation center is the physical place to go and then execute kind of the service that's needed depending on their need.
Do we know where the navigation center will be? I know Councilmember Fay was going to say something.
Go ahead, Mark. I can see you're not finished.
Well, I think to answer that question, no, we don't have an answer. I think that Inglewood has been looking at a particular location within their city that could serve for that that purpose. I think, again, we have to engage Arapahoe County, because if we're looking to them to help kind of manage this issue over time, we certainly need their can, their participation, consent in all of this. Those are the kinds of details that we just haven't worked out yet, but the intent is, yes, eventually a navigation center, a physical place.
Did you have something you want to add to that?
I would, I would like to take a turn speaking.
But let me finish.
Okay.
Then you'll be next, okay?
And the proposal so far is not to have one, a navigation sit in each city, but rather one for the tri-cities area.
And I think that was Inglewood?
Inglewood.
At this point, it's Inglewood, yeah. It does say that.
It has a preliminary existence in Inglewood.
Thank you. Yeah, my concern is, a concern I have, is that homelessness is not ever going to go away, unfortunately. It is here, it's been here since mankind. The report in the Denver Post, I believe it was, not too long ago, said that they, Denver, spend somewhere between 45,000 to 100,000 plus per year on individuals, and I can believe that, because for individuals that need help, truly are getting help, it is a lot of services for many, many years. And I definitely want to help the people that we can, that is for sure, but it is a very costly thing to do. So I do support the plan that we're going to not hand it over everything to Arapahoe County, because we will have this navigation center, I believe is what we're calling it. And I think that will be helpful. This isn't the end of it, we're going to have to continue to address and tweak this thing as we go. Thank you. Councilmember Fay?
Responding to that, the Tri-Cities Homelessness Policy Group would hope to either that group continue or some form of it in in the future, because we have just taken a baby step in coming as far as we have and establishing the beginning of a navigation center. So that's just a start. Other things that have shown up while we were in existence are a program called Built for Zero, and that is an example of the federal government appearing and taking a role. This is the Veterans Administration, very well-funded, very well-supported. The Veterans Administration intends to, by the end of 2022, have a system where every veteran is home, who becomes unhomed, and then those all stay home. And an important new part of that is the federal government is addressing keeping those people home, addressing what they need to do that. And then, of course, some fall out, some come in, and the net gain of homeless veterans then is intended to be no net gain. A huge advantage of this program for all of us is that because the Veterans Administration has records for veterans, they know who the people are and where they are. That sounds intrusive, but the veterans agree to that in order to get the services. And so it lets us all measure who the homeless are, how many, where, what the needs are. The Bridge House showed up in just the last six months or so as a possibility, a strong possibility for our region, and the Bridge House in the sense of the fact to work or to work. And so the point of mentioning these things is new resources appear, big ones, well-funded ones. The federal government is well-funded, the veterans. Bridge House is well-funded also through their own funding mechanism. I too have your fear of ending up, Jerry, of getting saddled with expense. I think all of you know, I hate spending money, especially surprise money. Every conversation we've had in that policy group has been about using existing resources and not asking the cities for money. We are looking to the county, which is, it's probably, we became a group because the county wasn't addressing the problem, and then now they are very enthusiastic about it. So there's a lot of hope there. As far as Ronald Reagan's comment about a new program not ending, we, as a council, a different council, in three years or whenever that happens, have absolute power not to pay. If we get a surprise, we're going to say, we If we get a surprise where they say, "We need you to fund it," we can say no. It's not something that's going to come at us, just like it's not something now that's coming at us saying we, we need to fund this. I've put three years into this and it's the most functional group I have ever served on. A lot of that is due to Mark's leadership in it, which has been phenomenal, and to Samma's leadership in, in keeping us directed. So many groups dive, or digress into where can we go get this, that, and the other thing this group has stayed focused on. What's the job to do? I think that's all I have.
All right, council, this is not an item where, it's a general business item, so we don't have any public comment tonight. But staff is recommending that council approve the tri-city homelessness action plan. And it does require a motion.
I move to approve the tri-cities homelessness action plan.
Let me say, I'll, I'll go, is it?
We're really approving the resolution that approves the action plan.
Yes, if you have that.
I move to approve, approve Resolution 40-2021. Give me a script, I can do it. Approving the tri-cities homelessness, homeless action plan.
We have second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by councilmember Driscoll. Counsel, are you ready to vote? Okay, counsel, am I ready to vote here? Here we go. Open? All right, cool. Have we all voted? Like, no one's voted. Try this again, I'm sorry.
The vote is five in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. All right, council, we have no business under second reading tonight. So I will reopen the public comment section of our meeting. It is eight o'clock. So first I'll go through the remaining names, and if you're not on the list, you will still have an opportunity to speak after they have. So we will go to Mike Farah, then Nancy Tibbetts, then Carrie Veeth. So we'll start with Mika. Sorry. And as a reminder, if you will, please state your name, your address, and also speak directly into the microphone.
My name is Mika Farah.
Thank you.
My, my writing is not all that great. And I live at 6685 South Crocker Way in Littleton. LIRC is not one of the major expenses in the city budget. And in my opinion, its contributions far outweigh the small item it represents in the budget. We've had different statements of how many people have been assisted. But over the last eight years, in a report that the center prepared, I think for the council, over 1,027 immigrants have become U.S. citizens. And 3,467 students have learned English and citizenship. And there are about 1,072 volunteers who provided thousands of hours helping coach people in English and also in their citizenship. So there are a lot of people involved and that were, that you're not paying for. I mean, there's a lot of free labor there. One of the things that I think you don't, we don't sort of see, but many of the people who come to the programs in Bemis Library come, love downtown Littleton, they come in, they spend money. So they contribute to the tax, tax revenue from the businesses. And I went from Littleton Boulevard and Broadway down to Main Street and Santa Fe, and I counted the number of immigrant businesses, and there are approximately fourteen just in that little area. That doesn't include all the other areas and all the other malls where there are many immigrant businesses. So they're contributing to the tax revenues of the city. And I just want to urge you to reconsider your decision to cut LIRC out of the budget. I think that it's a great program, and I think it would be a good idea to keep it going at least for a year and if the city councils in the region would get together and talk about setting up a regional center. I know that some of the staff actually did approach some of the other cities, but they didn't get a positive response. And I think that, that you need someone from the city council and the city to talk to the other city about, "Look, we're helping your people, maybe you can contribute." But I think you need to keep the center going for a while until you get that settled. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have Nancy Tibbetts, and then Carrie Veeth, followed by Paul Bingham. And then we have Daniel Nolan and Robert Rasmussen.
Good evening, Nancy Tibbetts, 6548 South Louton Street, Littleton. I've been a resident of Colorado for 50 years, a resident of Littleton for four years now. And I'm here to speak on behalf of the LIRC program. I've been a professional educator for 35 years. I volunteered at LIRC until the program was discontinued because of the pandemic. It's a very emotional topic for me because the people that I dealt with were some of the most outstanding people I've ever worked with throughout my career. They're some of the most hard-working, dedicated and genuine people that I've ever been involved with. Many of the students held two or three jobs, raised families, ran businesses, paid taxes, and still came to classes two times a week to complete their citizenship program. And I also, when you decide to vote in favor of refinancing the program, I would heartily invite you to come experience one of our classes and the students that are involved. It's, it's an experience that you won't forget. I'm also very concerned that we don't have this program with the influx of immigrants from Afghanistan. They are gonna need our help. I am just really kind of, I am emotional. It is important to me, and I think it should be important to you. It's a program that's successful. You don't have to start over, you don't have to add thousands and thousands of dollars to reestablish it. It's a plus for the community. I can't tell you how many people I've told about the program that are impressed by it. And I really do believe it would be in your behalf to continue this program. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Carrie Veeth, Paul Bingham, Daniel Nolan, Robert Rasmussen.
Carrie Veeth, 6817 South Hill Street. So I generally observe these proceedings from afar, read the, the documents, but don't have much to add. This is my first time speaking. But after watching the August 24th study session, I was astonished at how council ignored the citizens compromised and the, the proposed ULUC recommendations across the board in regards to short-term rentals. And then they proceeded to draft an ordinance that does not effectively address any of the issues you set out to address three years ago. I understand and empathize with the concerns that you have about maintaining and proving the character of Littleton, but the ordinance as written does none of this. Creating a set of rules that allows for growth, hospitality, and maintaining local residents and the character of Littleton is key in this legislation. By limiting the ability for people to invest in the community and bring visitors who spend in our town and return in the future, we are limiting our growth. Littleton has limited, if no, hospitality solutions. And not everyone can host family and friends in their home. Non-primary STR owners are well-suited to provide top-tier hospitality to these guests, respond to concerns from neighbors in the city, and ensure ongoing investment in their property, something you often do not see with long-term rentals. I've stayed in a variety of homes and non-primary STRs are generally operated by individuals who treat hospitality as a top-of-mind focus and are concerned about their neighbors. They have the tools or technology to handle issues remotely when they're out of town, and they are not focusing on a rundown party house for a quick buck. There are a variety of tools that can be implemented to monitor the number of people in a building as well as address issues immediately. It's also important to me that we ensure affordability for all demographics. And there are concerns that you would turn long-term rentals into short-term rentals. But there are, once again, a variety of solutions, whether this is a cap on the total number of licenses. Something like 1% would be 200 units across the city with 20,000 housing units. We can limit density through a license review committee. And the economics of Littleton just do not support a runaway STR demand. We don't have the concerns of downtown Denver, Breckenridge, Aspen. The current rules are not reflective of what the citizens of Littleton desire. I can say from firsthand experience, my downtown HOA, in which I own a rental property, recently voted unanimously to approve all short-term rentals in all their forms. Please do not let fear drive your decisions. Let's approach this issue with a nuanced approach, and I know you've been working on it for three years, and most of my words may be falling on deaf ears based on some of your guys' engagement right now. But reasonable rules and a healthy involvement from the city provides a better avenue to solve problems and removes incentives for people to operate outside of the law.
Thank you. Next up, we have Paul Bingham, then Daniel, then Robert.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm Paul Bingham, live in District Three. Been there for over 50 years. New subject, Aspen Grove, October 5th, it's coming back up. It's within four votes of being approved. I'm really worried about the whole thing. I've read all the documents, which are currently missing from the city's website for some reason, and gone to all the meetings. I understand all the studs.
If you could hold on one second, please, city attorney.
Yeah, I was gonna say, as this is set for a public hearing coming up on October 5th, the, the application to rezone the Aspen Grove, that's the appropriate time to bring up comments about Aspen Grove would be on the 5th. That way, because it's quasi-judicial, it gives the applicant an opportunity to hear what's being said so that it's not being said outside of their presence. So I would have you either change the subject or hold your comments till October 5th. Thank you.
Well, how about Bugatti race cars? We could go, go into that.
You got 226?
Thanks, goodbye.
All right, thank you. All right. We have Daniel, then Robert. Daniel Nolan. I see no Daniel. How about Robert Rasmussen? See no Robert. All right, that is everybody that signed up. Is there anyone else who would like to speak that has not signed up? If so, come on up. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Do we have one? Come on, come on up, let's figure it out. I'm gonna guess.
Yeah, my name is June Kim.
Hey, June.
Nice to meet you. And I didn't know what is this meeting, and I just got an email from Mika. I just came from Home Depot to fix my shower. And I just wanna support this group, LIRC. I took the couple, the classes a couple of times, five years ago, and it helped me a lot to. I'm, I'm not a citizen, and I'm even, I'm not living in this area. I live by the airport. But I want, just one thing I wanna say. This country should have put more money for education and medical system. This is not even a second language, English is not my third language. But one thing, education and medical system is very important. That's all I wanna say. Thank you. I was not ready.
No, you did great, you did great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else I would like to speak? Seeing none, it is 8:12, and I will close the public comment. And city manager, city attorney, anything you'd like to add to the meeting?
Well, probably nothing to respond to here, but I would like to apologize for being emotional about our police officer. It's been a rough day, and hopefully that didn't offend anybody. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And, and again, the chief was fantastic today. City attorney?
I guess I'll.
Oh, man, I gave you a second.
I know, you gave me another opportunity to talk. You know, I, I would, I would just say, on that last note regarding the officer shooting, you know, the suspect still is at large at this point in time. But I am 100% confident that the suspect will be captured, so.
Excellent. Great, thank you very much. And with that, it is 8:14, and we are adjourned.